Call this planning board meeting to order, recognize the court. So we're going to move on to number two, the minutes of the last meeting we had during your pamphlet. We can review, get a motion to approve or not. We've got a question on page three, top sentence, which is, "If six shall not give up..." Finishes. That word seems out of place, it's changed. It's in the first part of this paragraph?
Your top sentence, the first sentence.
Top sentence.
It is double word, or residential, why?
The first sentence where it says residential or residential premises.
You got it.
Then it has the word six, S-I-X.
What does the word six mean?
Six is right after premises.
In addition, earlier in that sentence, should it not be called a right wing line versus four?
Right. Got it.
Does the six need to be crossed out?
Yes. It's just way of its transcriber, I usually catch those.
Any other corrections?
Thank you.
We have the first, we have the second, we have further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? None? All right, moving on to new business. So we have three items for public hearing, we can do one at a time, we can do all three at one time?
We can do all, we can do them separate, but I'm just going to quickly go through the procedure right quick, so I will not, I'm going to read this word for word, but for the procedure for public hearings, who's here for the planning board? So the way the steps are, the chairperson of planning board, they will call the meeting to order, or the public hearing to order, and then the chairperson will explain the purpose of the public hearing. Once that is open, the planning board requests that comments, or the speaker, the planning board requests that the comments not be repetitive. Also, each person who wishes to speak must state his or her name and address for the record. Planning staff will be called on to present the ordinance amendment, followed by others who wish to speak in support or opposition of the item. Also, members of the planning board may pose questions to the planning staff and the speakers who spoke in support or opposition of the item presented. After everyone has had a chance to speak, the chairperson will give planning staff an opportunity to respond to the public comments. The planning board, chairperson then closes the public, I'm sorry, closes the period for public discussion, then the planning board deliberates, and after that, the public hearing is closed, and planning staff may present its recommendation to the planning board at that time, and then a motion and second is made by the planning board, and if necessary, further discussion will take place, then a vote is conducted to approve or deny the recommendation of the ordinance amendment. And once that recommendation is made, after this meeting or tonight, written recommendation will be made to the town council for the April 4th, 2023 town council meeting.
All right, so we're going to do one at a time. I don't believe anybody's here for the floor, we don't have the first two.
Well, we're gonna, yeah, we're still gonna, yes, go through.
All right, so public hearing, consideration of ordinance amendment for rooming housing, rooming house to be allowed in multifamily zoning district as special use. So we can have a motion to go into public hearing? First, we have a second, we're going to public hearing. So, anybody has anything to, do we want to hear from the applicants first?
Sean will present the case first.
You don't know Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board staff, as you see before us, we don't have to go into deep detail on this, because I think that will be very different actually, pretty much, feel confident what we'll be voting on that, even proof of disapproval. What we have before us was an application voting by Ms. Diane Holtzman, who owns the property over North Lumber, 223. She wants to be able to use it as a rooming house, boarding house, for terminology. Her plan is to be able to have it out where nurses that work at Nashville, knock them out, have someplace they can come stay around, especially in the signs, week signs, two weeks, month of signs, so they don't have to, it's hard to find pretty much a place for a victim, this is probably for the three month status, so that's what she's wanting to do. We'll just kind of go through and dive in, we won't have to go through everything word for word, but pretty much, rooming house, building portion of a building which contains guest rooms, which are designed and intended to be used, let it hide out for occupancy by which or occupied by formal, not a single, non-individual compensation, what compensation is paid to rent or any revenue. Pretty much our description of district, oh, we're not, we're pretty much going on oh, now is, B1, general business district, B2, A1, RT, and R6, R4, we all see now these different forms of the other, who's they improve, which is what we have for the board. She's in a ML zone, I talked with her, and I encouraged her for what she's trying to do. I would say this needs to be done as a special use. So we go for the town, we can put the application, for the town, for food and food, stimulation conditions on the property, how long the people gets to come in the house, goes on this stuff, we can figure out. If you look on page seven, that's pretty much showing you what the problem is at, it's in the ML zone district, across streets of RT and zone district, of course, everybody knows Lumber Street, it's back door, you got those two group offices, you got a few residences to the south, in front of it, two east, but it's all residential. Mr. Chairman, pretty much run through the final facts, and then we'll go ahead and turn off for you in the public hearing session. She came in on February 27th, 2023, but she said, "I got a conversation with me about this." I mean, I heard her talk, and I told you before, I advised her that I would recommend it as a special use. I took this third choice, and go special use or for you, but I told her I think it would be a special use, and I feel like, then give us some standards, and we can come back and adjust it. Planning board schedule, meeting scheduled for March 20, 2023, since then, a public hearing noted 27, recent Nashville, November 16th to March 23rd. Public agenda notes, we post on the town hall front door, library door, town council chairman, national parks, red sign, several problems, about half an acre, five acres, address probably wants this, 223, off Lumber Street. Problem's not located within a flood plain, but of course, problem's located in Upper Stone Creek, South watershed, Stone Creek watershed, Upper Tall River, Sub Basin, Tall Family Co, River Basin, South Atlanta Gold Bridge, and East Family Co, Southern, of course, that's Nigga, that's kind of located in these waters. That's what we have, least, planning board recommendation, go for the town council, April 4th, 2023, for final decision. So this is what she is proposing, is Ms. Diane Holtzman here? I thought it was you, Diane. Ms. Diane is here, Mr. Chairman, before we open up the public hearing, if you'd like me to turn over Ms. Holtzman, so speaking of her statements, to give you more detailed details on what she was thinking about doing with this.
We're in a public hearing, do we need to come out of the public hearing?
Yeah, we need to open up the public hearing. We will straight to set up, we got the staff.
He opened up before we did.
Oh, he did, that's no problem. There's no problem. Well, we can go into the public.
She can talk in the public hearing, right?
Yes, she can. I'll turn off, if you want me to, I'll turn off Ms. Holtzman, so the board can ask her questions.
One question for you first.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned special use or permit, so what's with the permit?
If this is passed with you guys, and passed with the town council, special use permit, when she, when she gets ready to do this business, the real business, she would have to come apply for special use permit, which their application will have to make their government, town, board, council, to apply to be able to get a approval denied. During that, during that period, that was our initial year, the town board can put stimulation on a permit, things ranging from time frame, or differently, they don't make a difference sometimes.
What's there between that and regular permit?
If this is allowed use, if this passes tonight, and it passes April 4th, she can come in and then sell April field, apply for zone permit, we have to issue our permits, we have to be, if it's special use, then we have the, what the town board has brought to put stimulation based on.
Is there an expiration date on the special use permit? Or is it good?
From what I was told, it's always good until the person, the legal property, we even charge a permit back in, I never know.
It involves the person, not the property?
Yes.
It follows the property.
If she sells her property, if she sells it, then the new owner has the property.
Yeah.
But as long as she's the owner of that property, she's good enough.
And also, just to add with that, if this use is, if the special use, if this zoning text amendment goes through, is for the whole entire multifamily zoning district throughout the town of Nashville, not just for this piece of property.
So everybody with ML can apply for.
We're changing allowing for special use in the theory, which is not there.
Yes.
Correct. And it's also, it's in other residential zoning districts, such as your A1, RT, R6, and R4.
But this, this would allow also for Airbnb, verbo.
So it's boarding house, rooming house, and bed and breakfast?
Questions to say?
So in my understanding, if she has a permit here, which is for her property, correct?
No, she does not have a permit, this is just a text.
This is, this is just for the text amendment own.
This property is the one that we apply, is applied.
This is fine to, that's for me. We're actually going to either deny or agree to add special use allowability to multifamily, so she can move forward and sue anybody else, or not.
This affects all multifamily?
Yes.
It's not specific to this property, it's possible to do it for other individuals?
Yes, sir.
Right.
For special use. And if it's done, so it's just for this property, case by case?
This case, that's what the special use permit is for. The special use permit is case by case.
If it passes.
Right, so it still has to go, she still has to apply for whoever is in the multifamily zoning district, it still has to obtain a special use permit from town council.
So if I live at 326 Sixth Street, I mean, you know it's on which, this house passed both boards, the planning board and the town council, I would have to apply for a special use permit, 326 Sixth.
Current, current, and nobody.
And I can't be denied, she can be approved for her, but you do not know, and then you can see the impact on home building, it's really big.
Which is what, currently still, R6 and 4, I have a will, especially if it's, it's all made, all made, it's a basis for each company, correct?
Yes, sir. RT, R6, R4, all special use.
Especially for residential areas.
So currently, it's not allowed in R30, R15, does that understand?
Right.
And may I also add, in, on page, on page 11, where the actual draft is, so in, for some reason, in our MUNICode, where you see rooming house in red, the R4, and the R4, somehow, it had an S under R4, but it didn't have the R4 listed with the special districts. So it could have been a typo, and it had, currently on in the MUNICode, now it has boarding houses, bed and breakfast establishments, but it left out rooming houses. But it, but if you look at the table of permitted uses, it's all grouped together, it's all listed out. So we just, while we're cleaning, while we're doing this now, we can go ahead and clean it up.
Mr. Chairman, we have a sort of a press meeting, staff, how we let you turn on this thing, this is important, I think I put to, from you can probably, it goes out.
Okay.
Excellent.
Sean, the address is 222 North Lumber.
Okay, yes.
There's two buildings, 222 and 223, this one is 222.
Do you state your name and address for the reference?
Diane Holtzman, 100 Boyd Park Drive, Nashville.
Give us your other speech.
The two buildings are, well, we're not, I'm talking about, they were a 12-bed assisted living facility, is what it was, and they closed down. And so, there are six bedrooms in each building, five bathrooms, kitchen, living room, dining room, laundry room, storage areas, and I just see a need, from talking to other people that are doing it, for traveling nurses to have a place to stay, because their sign up is usually like 13 weeks, unless they, they have the option to renew it. And so, I have a quadriplex apartment that's right next door, and then the two 12-bed facilities that are next door, so, very quiet, I've been there since 1997, not having any trouble.
So, so this was built as a?
They were built as assisted living, and operated one until January of last year.
Did you have a special use for that, or? No, different things, different things happened.
I had no idea.
Okay, so the other, the other half of the building, do you not plan on doing anything with it currently?
There's two buildings, separate.
Okay. Let me try and stand, so, I see a picture of a long building with a porch and two doors.
Uh huh, there's two of those.
There's two of them?
Yeah.
Across the street from each other.
Oh, okay, across the street, I got you.
So are you at this location where the green dot is?
She said 222.
She said 222?
Yes.
Right, so, so just to make a correction for the record, so what's in our packet is 223, but I will let the record reflect that it's 222 North Lumber.
So currently, 223 is read after individuals for long term?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anybody signed, but this helping, we did, I took it in that piece, and this we can, we can see that on the speaker.
Okay.
We are actually discussing the 222, the planning board, anyone who wants to speak on that, 222, planning board. Okay, so we just want to make sure that the, the planning board.
We need a motion to close, public, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close public comments? And for a discussion, all in favor, say aye. Would you want to start the discussion, or we move on to the next one?
We got a question, sir.
Okay.
So the recommendation I've already presented before the board is I present she has a separate permit, special use permit. So as always, we have four ways we can vote, we can vote number one, to approve it, as a special use permit, which indicates that she will have to come back if it passes town council, she's in town in Nashville, apply for special use permit, where it can quasi condition be in the government, town council. Same way as we can approve it, as a permit use, if it passes town council, April 4th, she can come in on April the fifth, apply for zone permit, we can give a, I think, a legal permit, operate this, this. Third way we can vote, we just approve it. If we not want to do this right now, it's not for the time for the family, we need to sit back and think on it a little more. Or the fourth, we can do, as always, our last option, we can table it, to our next meeting, it's a chance to go home, discuss it, think about it, make a decision, then we can turn that to the, at bay, the main duty of the town council, to take it for view, Mr. Chairman.
So a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Both options, the permit and the special use permit, are all multifamily, not just terpar?
All multifamily, yes, sir.
I have one question about the next step of applying for a special use permit, at that time, because the property now was designed originally as, you said, the assisted living, and so then the special use permit is applied for, will that also, that property go back before TRC or anything, to ensure that codes, building codes are appropriate?
We can take it, usually, for uses of any store, we can take it to TRC for review.
Because a resident, yeah, I don't know this, I know there are differences in building codes for different types of uses in a building, so I want to make sure that we're covering that.
We should say.
Yes. So once the special use permit is applied for, it's a TRC.
Is there some kind of checks and balances?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, so, you heard the options, we have one of four options to move forward. I will entertain the motion.
I believe that we approve the text amendment to allow multifamily, rooming houses in the special use permit for multifamily, and clean up the rest of the text, to make it aligned properly.
First, we have a second, is there further questions or discussion? Are there none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're going to move on to the second one. Do you want to go first, before we do the public comment?
Yes.
So, consideration of ordinance amendment for electronic signage.
And this is a continuation from the last meeting, and what I did, I just went through to clean it up, so, from the last meeting, we reviewed the electronic signage or message boards, from what we have in our code now, as for town of Nashville regulations, we also reviewed what we had, what was in Nash County, Franklinton, Wilson, and Zebulon. So those were the photos and regulations regarding electronic signage or message boards. And so, on page, and I also submitted an application as well, that's on there, so actually on page 21, if you want to go ahead and review that, I did receive an inquiry regarding the minimum seconds or time for the actual display, so that, I just threw in 10 seconds because they, that was just a suggestion of 10 to 20 seconds, so I just put 10 in there, so, and I know you wanted me to clean, clean it up a little bit, and we want to just look through and see if any changes we need to make, or would like to make.
So question number three, it has 100 foot residence.
Right.
But on the code, on page 13, it's 150, so that's.
So the thing is with that, it was kind of contradictory, because you already have in your sign elimination section of the ordinance, so if you have the signage in there, they can't be on from a 12, you know, if they're across the street or within a residential district, it has to, the illumination has to be off from 12 to 6. So, you know, you're putting a distance on it, we can take, take that out, but if you still leave it in there, they can't be eliminated from that time period anyway. I was just throwing the residential.
Well, couldn't it be the same footage, so it's not confusing?
Yeah, I think there's, what you mentioned, there's a 100 foot, not a long distance, listed on page 21, but on page 13, it's 150.
Yes.
Yeah, I forgot to take it.
21 starts, 30, 13 starts.
Page 13.
13.
Right, so that's, so that's no sign within 150 feet of a residential zone may be eliminated, that's what I was talking about. So it's not saying that it can't be there, it was just saying the signs that's located in there can't be eliminated from 12 to 6.
Look at 21.
And then on page 21, that's the actual location.
21 looks great.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's the actual location, but we can take it out, so.
We might, not even make a match.
Yeah, you can make.
It makes sense, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Because they do know what it is, and which ones, which ones which.
Right, I was going to take it out completely, but what is, what is the board's desire?
I like that, not operating in a time frame, it's me, or, I'm not sure, it's not the footage, it's just me.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay, so take out number three?
Not just reflect the children, like, for the district.
Yes, and that's, that's also in number five.
And then last time, we were talking about the distance from the residential.
Yeah, the zone, and that's what I was trying to gear around too.
And I think we've went through several discussions about how close was too close, or how far was too far, and so I'm just trying to, I like the 100 feet from a residential district, because we mentioned several places here that you couldn't put a sign at all, because you would be too close, and that, and you were in a business district, but you're close to residential district, so I like the idea of having 100 feet as a minimum, because I think that's better than 150. Because I don't know, but I see what Sarah, she was saying, you're really, page 13 really isn't about the distance, and then on distance, it's about the illumination.
Right, that's, that's relating to the illumination, but do you want to put a distance requirement from the sign to a residence, or from a sign to a residential zoning district?
I think that's what I remember as, the district is much more strict than a residence itself. I was anxious to see that, you know, when this came in, I was reading that, just making sure of the, the districts for businesses and the residential.
Because you can be, you can have a commercial, you have a commercial zoning district that abuts a residential district, so, but that sign, where that sign is located in the commercial district, and if it abuts up to the residential district, it may not, I mean, that's what you're looking at.
So, what, 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 which to, together, if you're a non-residential area, don't plug non-residential, you're citing a question.
If it's within, if it's within, if it's within a residential district.
No, if it's not within the residential, it's a commercial district.
Yeah, if it's in a commercial district, yes, it can.
I'm seeing the difference now.
Any other questions or comments?
On page 21, R6, I notice several model rooms, there's actually five, they meant to flash. Some of the model rooms, as you presented, they have examples of what they consider flashing. Number six, it says, signs are not allowed to flash or taminate.
Right.
And it says, two model rooms, it says, five, they can see the flashing, just to show, saying you can flash, the sign flashes, or it's called flashing, I think it was a message, change less than ever, so.
And a lot of ordinances in here, even within the illumination section, we don't allow flashing.
The minimum 10 seconds to, no, 10 seconds to.
Well, currently, we, we can scroll, but it just can't flash, right?
Message, not necessarily.
I believe before, in the other, in the, before this draft, we were saying it, saying between five plus.
Seconds.
Zebulon, say the file with you.
We need to either bring a motion to approve, or we need to bring a motion to table, or bring a motion to, to that, I guess. We've talked about this a lot, I think.
My question has been satisfactory, I'm, we just need to prove it, we want a motion.
And just like the record reflect, we don't have anyone from the public to speak on this.
Good, good. Okay, so we have a motion. Second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Okay, motion here. All right, moving on to number three. Public hearing, consideration of ordinance amendment to, um, flood damage prevention ordinance.
All right, I'll let the record reflect that we do not have anyone here present for the flood, um, damage prevention ordinance, and just, um, to let everyone know, the town of Nashville is currently in its five-year reevaluation of flood plain properties, and every yearly, we, the town has to do its evaluation, so it's time for us to do the five here, and actually now, um, depend, so far, we are in a class eight, so based on your, um, on a scale from one to 10, with number one being the best class, so the lower the class, the lower your, the flood interest rates, the flood rates can be, so, um, so I'm trying my best to get as many points as possible, so we can drop from a class eight to a class seven. So, and speaking with the specialist, um, he mentioned that in our flood damage prevention ordinance, that we were missing language about, regarding the base flood elevation for, um, machinery and equipment, and so in the other various ordinances that he looked at, he sent me some language, and so I kind of looked at that language and placed in ours, what you see in red, this is what we need to add, and basically what needs to be added in there is to, uh, make sure we reflect that the machine and equipment is, um, to the regulatory flood protect, protection elevation. And that's, that's all that was, because the actual residence, it had the appropriate language for that, we just needed to add some language in there for the actual machinery and equipment.
So for an HVAC to get a permit through, through the town, they have to have an elevation certificate?
If it's within, if it's in an actual flood zone.
So that's where it's adding mechanical, most of HVAC information.
So any, usually any, um, work additions or whatever you do within the flood, property that's within flood plain, you have to get an elevation certificate and whatnot, and go through that process.
Okay, so the town has submitted an application for this, and, um, these ordinances are changing on page 25, or in red. There's no public to speak, so when I go up to the public hearing, so we need to either approve the town's request, or deny, or ask for more information. And this will save taxpayers money for their insurance, or set the town or both?
Um, the citizens who, um, currently now paying for flood insurance, we're trying to get their rates dropped, if we can drop to another class, to a lower class.
But it will, it will be a cost, the elevation of your, of our files. entertain a motion?
I'm moved to think that we, um, approve that, that amendment that has presented, makes sense.
I think that is pretty frustrating, to, to, to say, my home's in a flood zone. And my base all those I say is at the flood zone. I go have no way to get a C system, I may say, but I'm, I was, I was. So you get my thought, it's a local relationship, and for worship.
So, to me, that's, that's what I would read this as, um, but I guess, I don't, there's a lot of other gent qualities in there, so yes, I would read that, you would replace it, elevate it, above, add or allow, I think it says. And then even, because the duct systems are in there, they would be.
Can all of that help, you don't necessarily?
Should, and acknowledge, in my apologies, I have ownership places there. Home, I need to put a new HPC, and they say the double, I need to replace two. So something back to elevate my house, and I should double, so I'm standing, HPAC is easy to elevate, but do I have to raise my house in the double?
That, I'm not sure.
Or put it in the alley?
Yes, so you're relooking at the.
But that would be controversial, especially a two-story house, you know, they go, it's a first floor. There should be many squids, but we have a side, it's just a few options, I'm, saying I'm in this frame, I'm standing, you will force me to raise my house. 10 miles in the other condition says to add speed, or balance, raise my. Many squids are an option, smoking is.
There would be some other options, and again, that's the subject, I mean, just, it'd be each case will be, we, we're doing work in flood zones now, that we are, and honestly, the place has flooded, so everything's getting, so. For mitigation.
My answer is a question.
I had a hand, a question.
Do we now, generally, um, I mean, we all know what areas are flooded in Nashville, we work, but percentage wise, in the, 25% of town, or is there, I know there's maps, but I'm.
I believe, I know Indian Trail was one of those here. So we get a second?
All right, we did not get a second. First, there's a second, any further comments or questions? Okay, all those who say aye?
Aye.
opposed? All right, our next meeting will be April 25th, 2023, at 6:00 P.M. And will you have something that night?
On April 25th, um, we can keep, I mean, I don't have any problems with that date, but if we have anything to come in, I would like.
The current?
Currently, yeah.
All right, so, not waiting to join?
Sure, I have a question.
It's planning board. It's, it's still planning board.
I live at 1792, first of 16.
This, that's for the next item.
That's the next.
This is mid-meeting.
That's the next meeting. We have another meeting, that's board of adjustment, we're still in planning board.
Uh, okay, I didn't, uh.
Yes, man. Hold tight.
But there is a sheet to sign up, right?
Yeah.
Or you can sign up to the public, at that next meeting, you can sign up to the.
And that's, my name behind.
In a few minutes, since we adjourned this one, and we'll start, we'll change places.
Let us.
Y'all sure know how to hide in Nashville, because we've been everywhere, kind of, y'all. I'd like to be for the bar, hey, Ray.
All right, so do you have motion to adjourn, adjourn? Yeah, all those who say aye? Aye.